Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Tuesday, November 27th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes on the November 13th, 2018 regular meeting?
So, second.
All those in favor? Any abstentions? Lisa's abstaining, Diana's absent. Most of us approve them. We have an opportunity for public comment. Would anybody in the audience like to comment?
Hi, my name is Stacy Stahlacher. I am the Annie President this year. Annie stands for Association of Non-Instructional Employees. The Rhinebeck Annie Unit is here to show you our solidarity as a team. Our contract has been expired now for over five months, and Annie feels that the district is ignoring our needs. Our members represent a large variety of staff positions who interact with the students and/or parents on a continual basis on school days as well as throughout non-school periods of time. We care for the students and buildings in every manner that you could imagine, including consoling the students because they had a fight with a parent or guardian before they came into school, because they received a bad grade on a test, or just because they don't feel well. We are aides that get the students from class to class and assist with medical needs. We are custodians who prepare the buildings daily, get the grounds ready after weather-related issues, prepare the fields for sporting events, and clean up after our students when they get ill. Our clerical staff and clerks work with parents and staff to set up meetings, find forms and materials, prepare New York State Ed documents to meet State Ed guidelines. We help develop grants for various departments lessening costs to the district, and we assist with all types of computer meetings. We create a safe environment while developing relationships with other staff and students for a better experience for Rhinebeck Central School District students. With so much emphasis now being put, and rightfully so, on student social and emotional wellness, our members are quite often the core of the district programs and services given to the students which assist them with their ever-growing social and emotional concerns they are being forced to deal with and grow from. Presently, our membership is 52 strong, and we are continuing to work hard to bond with the RTA in support of the needs of the students. We are looking for a fair contract, and we are hoping that our upcoming December 10th negotiations will be heard and listened to. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Okay. And we'll move on to reports and discussions. We have a presentation for our school climate survey.
Yes, so I wanted to introduce Amanda Weitzel to the board and to the folks who are here at our meeting this evening. As you mentioned, Amanda is from the National School Climate Center, and the board certainly is aware of the fact that the last two years we have conducted a school climate survey in our district in the fall, but last fall was fairly recently, and as part of the board's discussion of social-emotional wellness as a goal for this year. And at the board's request, we've asked Amanda to come to our meeting tonight and give you an overview. You've got several phone books worth of the very granular data in your backpack over the weekend, and I've asked Amanda not to read from those front to back, because we've been here for quite a while, but she is going to give you an overview of the data. So if you have this in front of you, you can follow along. If any of you want to move your seat so you can see better, I may just do that. Feel free. And that said, Amanda, we'll turn it over to you, okay? Also, due to some technical difficulties with many of the remote changer not working, Amanda's kind of tied to that part of the room, and she'll do it manually. So, Amanda, for yours.
Thank you. I'll project the best I can. But my name is Amanda Weitzel from the National School Climate Center. I've worked with Rhinebeck closely, being principals too, the past couple of years getting this survey out, so I'm very close to the data. And tonight, we're going to look at the district report from this last administration, although we can look and compare year to year. But that being said, I just wanted to talk a little bit of overview about who we are as this kind of third party coming in. We were founded out of Teachers College Columbia. We've worked with several state departments of education, including Iowa, Idaho, Minnesota, Connecticut, and currently in our third year. Thousands of schools in districts nationwide, independent schools, charter schools, public schools, you name it, also international education ministries. We've also developed a National School Climate Council in 2006 to set certain standards, who are, and that council is made up of key leaders in the field. A little bit of background about the CSCI. The CSCI is the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory, so that's the school climate survey we're talking about here, so you'll see that acronym and hear me say it a lot. But it was developed in 2002. It's valid and reliable. It's been tested in three independent research studies, which are noted here, so we have that strength to fall back on. Just the benefits and assessments of the report, and really just getting a whole school community view here. Like I just said, it engages the whole school community. It's a really holistic approach, looking at students, staff, and families' perception of school climate to really gain that school-wide perspective, to really see if students and staff, for example, are living the same reality on a day-to-day basis. It recognizes school strengths. It really comes from an asset-based approach, especially once we're looking at the reports, finding out really what are the strengths we're building, and then how do we build the fundamentals, while also finding out what are the needs and really prioritizing that. Using the survey also helps set a baseline, so like I said, we conducted the survey last year, so really can see change over time by looking year to year. This digs a little bit deeper into the overall school climate improvement process. Right now, we're in stage two, which we're measuring and evaluating, and we're working our way into action planning. The schools are actively doing that right now. I think it's just important to take a step back and realize it is part of the bigger picture and a bigger process, and it doesn't always follow the same flow, even though this is a formative cycle listed here. And again, really just this image drives home that the student is the center of all of this work, and to remember that. This is a little bit wordy, and I'll just go through it a little bit quick here, but like I was saying, we're in stage two right here, really gathering all of the data and really just making sense of it. Like I was saying before, it's a friendly formative evaluation. We really come from the approach of a no-fault framework. It's not playing a shaming game. It's figuring out what are the needs of the community and how do we get to them. This might be a little bit small to read to, but this is exactly what the CSCI or the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory measures, so this is really your go-to as you're digging through the data and subgroups and the graphs and all of that. So just on the left-hand side, you'll see the dimensions listed under each major domain. So each domain is safety, teaching and learning, interpersonal relationships, institutional environment, social media, and two staff-only components, which are leadership and professional relationships. Again, those are the major domains here, and then on the right-hand side, you'll see the major indicators on the right-hand side. So if you are looking through the images and need to keep this handy, that's definitely a good idea and might be helpful as you look throughout the data. Starting out is just the response rates here, for students, teachers, staff, and families. They're listed here. There's a good turnout for students. Usually for students and staff, we look for 85 to 100 percent completion rates, just because those are the two groups that are really co-creating and living and breathing in the same environment together, so getting as much voice from them is really important. So like I was saying, student response rate looks good. Same for families. We usually look for 30 to 40 percent, which can be extremely ambitious, but these response rates overall look good. Typically, we see more engagement at the elementary school level, which is what we hope to see a little bit up here. So that's just to remind you, you know, as you're looking throughout the data, especially for families, there's only some representation there, so really thinking about, too, who didn't you hear from and how do we hear from them now? And that can be a part of the action planning process. The whole report, as we're looking at the actual data and numbers, we're using factor median, so median scores here. It's based on five-point Likert scale from strongly agree to strongly disagree, with neutral in the middle. And that box on the lower side kind of walks you through what that means and how you can interpret that, a little bit easier of a way. So anything of 3.5 and above is considered in the positive range. Anything 2.5 to 3.5 is in the neutral range, and then anything below 2.5 is in the negative range. So that's another thing, the long of the dimensions, to kind of keep it handy as you're looking throughout the report, to really tie all the pieces together. Okay, starting out, so the district report is really a bird's-eye view to what's happening, and this just starts with the aggregate scores by population groups, so for students, staff, and families across all 13 dimensions, as you can see, it's listed at the bottom with the median scores range on the left-hand side here. So again, it's for students, staff, and families, and here you can just see that staff have higher perceptions across most of the dimensions, and that's what we typically see in our trend data. Staff are a little bit more positive in terms of dimensions compared to students and families, which is shown here, with the exception of respect for diversity, I think that is right there. All population groups are in agreement with that, have the same median score. See the ones for social media. Those scores are clustered closer together, which you'll see on the, which is two in from the left-hand side of social media. And again, this is across all three schools, for students, staff, and families. The next few charts break it down a little bit further, right? So we just looked across the populations, and now we're going to look specifically at students by building. So you have the buildings on the right-hand side, they're indicated there with that key. Again, all the dimensions are on the bottom with the median score on the left-hand side. You can see that the elementary school is more positive overall for most dimensions, and that's another trend that we typically see as students go up in grade, which we have an image for coming up, perceptions of school climate drop. And that is just, you know, there's a bigger emphasis on testing and things like that at the higher levels, so academics kind of take more of a front role. So you can see that especially for social and civic learning, that dimension tends to kind of nosedive after elementary school. Also, you can see here, same kind of thing, like I was just saying, the middle school is in the center for most dimensions, of high school, a little bit lower. And again, they're typical trends that we see. The next one is staff, so we just looked at staff, now looking at students. Same thing here, all three buildings. Staff are a little bit closer together in terms of their clusters as well. They follow a similar trend line, as you can see here, with all of them in agreement from social support students, which really speaks to the relationships in the building, the peer relationships, friendships in terms of new students coming in, how we're welcomed, so there's agreement there. And again, it follows a similar line. You can see that the first dimension, safety rules and norms, which is that first plot point up there, is rated high for all, for all staff, and it was rated high for students as well. And that just talks about the rules and norms in the building, whether rules are clearly enforced, if they're consistently enforced, if they're fairly enforced, so that seems to be coming up to the top for positive for staff. Next here is families. So like I was saying, you have to remember, this isn't all of the family voices represented in this image, it's only a subset, so keep that in mind as you look at this data. Similar to staff, follows a similar trend line, which just shows the positive feedback that families hear from their children, it's our collective needs numbers. Like I was mentioning before, this one is students' scores by grade level. We're starting grade three to 12. The CSCI right now, the lowest grade you do assess is grade three, so that's why we're starting there. So grade three to 12, you have the median score on the side, and then you have all of the dimensions this time listed on the right-hand side with a specific icon, so there's a lot going on here just because there's all of the dimensions that we're looking at. But you can just see, like we were seeing in the charts for students, that elementary school students are a little bit more positive, and as students go up in grade, you see some perceptions drop, some more than others. Like I was saying, social and civic learning is one that we always see that kind of makes that nosedive, which is reflected here. And again, that's just because we hypothesize that there's just more of a front run for academics and testing, which happens from here in grades seven to eight. You can see that icon, it's that little purple upside-down triangle here. Mostly in the high school grades, we tend to see dimensions for scores just level off, which you can specifically see here for sense of physical security, which is that purple box. Grades nine, 10, 11, 12, it's a game for group outcomes. So again, you can just kind of see year over year, and like I was saying, if you look at last year's district report, which I did, look comparison of, and trends were very, very similar. I think the bigger changes are going to, you're going to see them in the individual CSCI reports, which are pretty lengthy, but specifically in the subgroup sections of those reports are where you'll see the change over time. This next chart just ranks all of the dimensions that we've been looking at, from highest median score to lowest median score, and I just outlined a few of them. So you have the dimensions on the left-hand side, then we have students, staff, and families. Right off the top, you can just see that safety rules and norms is number one across the board. Again, it's important to look at the actual median score that's represented here. Just when you're ranking things, naturally something has to come to the bottom. It doesn't mean that it's in the negative score range that we were looking at before, so that's important to keep in mind. But number one overall. I know from last year's district report, as I was looking throughout the data, and again, parents is different, different subsets, but parents rated safety rules and norms number five last year, and now it's one. So looking at those differences year over year will help you see those changes. Another one I highlighted was support for learning for staff. It was ranked number four here. Typically, again, especially when we're looking at those teaching and learning dimensions, we see that staff do rate them higher, specifically because they're the ones behind it there, and then you see agreement from students and families in terms of that dimension. Respect for diversity for students, number two, which I just highlighted there, which I just think is good. Again, I think sometimes we look at the data, we want to find out, you know, where are the needs and how do we help them, but it's important to look at the good things that are happening, so to see respect for diversity number two for students is great. Social support adults, moving to that next impact on the way down, is ranked number two. So there's good working relationships among staff who completed the survey, which is A little word here, too, because this is just everything I've been mentioning while talking now, so just some of the strengths. Safety rules and norms is a major area of strength across all three populations, along with social support adults and social support students, and that goes district-wide. And again, that really speaks to the relationships that are happening in the buildings, which are, like I was saying earlier, we're looking at this from an asset-based approach. What is the strength and how do we build off of that, especially if we are looking into sense of social-emotional security? If there's good relationships happening in the building, how do we leverage those to help with our, the social-emotional needs throughout the district? Like in that last slide, I would start with the same, social support adults is ranked number two for staff. Also, physical surroundings, which is important, especially when we're talking about school climate, which ranks pretty positive overall across populations. It is number two for parents, and number three for students and staff. A few areas for potential improvement, sense of social-emotional security, it's a need district-wide across subgroups, too, for grade level, gender, race, ethnicity, and that's also a common trend that we see, that dimension particularly across populations, across all the schools and networks that we work with, is bubbles up to be a need. Along with social and civic learning, which is something else you can look a little bit deeper into. Like I was saying, if the high school has grades pull up, we typically see that dimension falls, and that's what we're seeing here. I know earlier this month, schools worked with uncharted data, district and especially the school-level reports, looking at common themes, also looking at other programs that are happening in the building. A big part of this is integration and how do we build and weave all of this together so nothing feels like a one-off kind of side piece thing. So that's happening right now, and then also, like we were talking about, just building in these baselines, so conducting future surveys, really, again, thinking back to that image of this fuller process of school improvement. And then here's my contact information, and you have the PowerPoint that we have this, but if there's any questions at all, or if you want me to go back to this image, we can probably talk through that now.
Have you been seeing a trend nationwide, I guess, that huge disparity between high-ranking for rules and safety structures, I guess, in place with really low marks for feeling safe, which I'm guessing, like, well, some people have seen shootings happening around the United States, but, I mean, is that really common seeing?
Yeah, right now, we're looking at our data, specifically just, you know, the current events, what's happening, and, you know, seeing if there are differences or kind of spikes in changes across dimensions. That's a really good point, because both of those dimensions are in the domain of safety, which is why, too, in looking at the data, everything's interrelated, so try to remember that, kind of looking at the data is important. A lot of schools, I think, do find that disparity, sometimes they'll go back to the policies and just remove the norms of the building and kind of look through them and see if they are being reflected in everyday kind of process and, but that's a really good point, too.
How do the response rates of the three cohorts relate this year as to last year?
They were similar. They were very similar.
So, I mean, what, how, in your view, how reliable are these data for, you know, extrapolation to the populations in general? Because the response rates are not, you know, 100 percent, as you said you would be looking for.
Sure, yeah. For students, I think it's a good representation, especially once you're getting to the subgroups, you can see which grades are the voice of the survey. For families, I would say it's almost, you know, to take the data with a grain of salt. A lot of our schools, too, just struggle with that parent engagement, family engagement piece. For staff as well, some of them weren't that 85 to 100 percent that we typically look for, which is okay. You know, this is kind of just the tip of the iceberg, the quantitative piece, but really to think about now the qualitative piece of maybe conducting a focus group, or really hearing from those who didn't have their voice represented now, as they see you're using the data for improvement, that might get them excited to actually participate. A lot of the work is just building momentum, too.
I see.
By the community, yeah.
Thank you.
Can you speak a little bit about the trends that you saw between last year's data and this year? Is it all similar, or were there...
Sure. At the district report level, very similar, the trends. Like I was saying, safety rules and norms was, over last year and this year, very similar. The two bottom dimensions last year and this year were social media, sense of social-emotional security for all three groups, which again is a trend that we see. I think you'll see the most change in the individual CSCI reports, just because this is more higher level, when looking into the subgroup data around gender, grade level, race, ethnicity, at the individual schools, because each school has different needs.
Could you address the social media dimension? Because it seems to be pretty consistently low. Just explain to us, and I'm asking you to generalize now, of course, explain to us what's that, what's that meaning, social media, in what context?
Sure. That's our newest dimension. We added that in fall 2015, just as a need from our schools, because they were interested in knowing more about it. The particular questions, talk a little bit about whether, as a student, if you go online, feel safe, safe just using Facebook, or Twitter, or Instagram, or Snapchat, anything like that. So it's really just teaching, and it's asked of the younger grades, too, just to kind of start to teach positive behaviors of being online.
So online safety is something I'm teasing out of what you just said. Is that accurate?
Yes, correct.
Not necessarily related to school? Is it more general in their lives, or is it school taught?
Right, yes, more general in their lives. It doesn't say whether, you know, kind of inside school versus outside school, not right now, but like I was saying, that qualitative piece can be teased out. If you do a focus group, we're kind of those little other pieces.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Well, I have another question before we close this out. I'm curious for you to, I'd like you to explain, especially to the board members who haven't been part of this process unless they took the survey themselves as a parent, in terms of the next phases of this process. And you talked about the fact that we're in the, I think, the planning, action planning phase. Would you just explain to the board what happens in that phase and how does that lead into the implementation evaluations? Kind of take us through the whole process. We've done the first two, we're starting on the action planning phase, kind of, how does the whole thing work to the point where we're surveying again next year or whenever?
Yeah, certainly. I'll just go back to that.
Okay, great.
Of the year. So yeah, and just real life, too. It doesn't always happen in this way, just because of the nature of schools. But yeah, like you were just saying, wrapping up the evaluation phase, working our way into action planning. And earlier this month, my colleague Serena LaRocque spent some time with the schools, really working through their data and kind of teasing out what their needs and areas of focus will be when it comes to action planning, whether that be safety or something a little bit more specific, and really what that looks like when you're thinking about long-term goals, short-term goals, and a little bit kind of easier low-life group, so to speak, to start getting the ball rolling, and then how to begin implementing those goals. So I think this, well, they're working on them right now, and like I said, Serena, my colleague Marvin, will all be talking shortly to kind of talk about those next steps and phases, particularly for this. Like you were just saying, you have to understand the work process, I think that's really important to remember, it is a process. You know, you won't see major shifts in scores over year to year. Right now, the field research is three to five years is when you'll see those shifts happening, especially at the student level. You know, if you're losing and getting new students every school year, so for some schools, that's a third of their student population that they're coming in and leaving, so it's an ever-revolving board to keep in mind this year as the schools are actually...
So is the focus grouping you were talking about before part of this stage as well?
Yeah, typically, just to get more data. You know, sometimes just seeing this data just raises a lot more questions, so really just getting more information on that can be part of that action planning process.
Could I, at the risk of putting them on the spot, but that's exactly what I'm doing, so you'll forgive me, could you just speak... so you'll forgive me, could you just speak to generally about how you're using this data, and I know we're at very early stages of this, but how you use the data to start engaging staff, and at some point, perhaps students and parents in the planning stage? I know it's going to take some time, but could any of you address that? I know you've already started that process.
Yeah, the last superintendence conference day began in high school, the evaluation process of the data, and that led into a program audit in terms of our programs that support students. And we were able to finish that conversation faculty level. We're going to pick that up at our faculty meeting next week to move into the action planning stage. So we're just concluding the evaluation stage. Part of the action planning evaluation stage will need to involve sharing these results with our students, as we did last year. So we're going to discuss that, and determine the best way to share the results in a meaningful way with the students who participated in this. Snapchat of the rest.
Sure.
For us, a chancellor, we're going to take, we're going to focus more on social-emotional wellbeing and security of schools. We're going to actually pick up where we left off and help these back. We were working with your group, which focused on initiatives that we currently have. And we've got about halfway through, and we kind of listened to all this staff. So I actually took that piece of information with me, and we're going to have a planning team pick it up two weeks from, yesterday, actually. And what we're going to hopefully do is start to, like, similar to what Ed said, we're going to audit the initiatives that we have in the building that focus on, I think, on the crawl, things like the PBIS program we started last year, to take a look at whether they kind of had a start in the process of rating those items. So for example, you know, one, if you rated it a one, it was, you know, we're going to keep that initiative as is. A two, we, you know, we're going to maybe expand on it. All the way to four, we might eliminate it completely. So we're actually going to continue that conversation with a little representation of that team. So that's what we're going to focus on.
Middle school's the same. It's a combination of what Ed said and what Fred said. We also were fortunate that our teams had an opportunity to work a little bit on that last superintendence conference day, do some planning. I don't think that it was any surprise to many of us that social and emotional safety and social media were two of the role of story. They were last year, they were again this year. So they've been a focus for us, initiatives for us. This year, my board reported that those are things that we've been working on. So we're doing the same thing, auditing what we do now, and we're making some action plans and planning for some more, you know, some more programs and, you know, techniques and procedures.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I'm sorry to monopolize a little questioning here, so jump in. I have one more question, and then I'd like to ask you. You mentioned that, that schools see shifts in the data usually over three to five a year, length of time. Given that, is it, is it the National Schools Climate Centers sense that there is value in surveying every year, even though you might not see trends for three to five years out?
Yeah, so that's just what's in the field right now, the three, five, ever-changing too. But most of our schools are moving to an annual basis in terms of surveying, just because of that baseline data. And then also, as the action plans are being built, building in, you know, certain areas for you to check in along the way. That way, we're not just waiting a year and then seeing what happened. So, you know, what are we looking at in three months? That way, if we need to course correct, we can do it now, rather than in eight months. So those can be built into action plans as well.
Okay, thank you.
Question I have, who will fall for. It seems like these focus groups are going to be really important to really understand, you know, why this order will, you know, what we're going to do about them. So in terms of the process, when will that happen? How will that happen? Or is that something that you guys are going to set up?
Sure. We have resources around them, examples, questions, you know, you can use the ones that were on the survey, you can adapt your own. But we do have a write-up of what that will look like, the whole process from beginning to end, which I can share out with Marvin. And then again, if that's built into the plans, that could be used as a resource.
So you could provide us with support in doing that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, great.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commander, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Come on, come on.
Gentlemen, you keep on recording. You need to warm up.
There we go.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
No, it's just for the camera. It doesn't amplify in here.
Ten years. So I gave a quick report, just briefly. My first item was our BLPT update, and as I mentioned, in an attempt to connect school-level data to climate survey data, we're going to work through some of the things that we just mentioned. And just to expand on that a little bit, really, it was really a wonderful thing. It was really kind of a show of hands when we sat down and for, we probably had about 25 or 30 items on it, and we do, you know, everything from mediation to the PE council, to the PBIS, you know, CLS heroes, the affirmations we do over the laptop speaker every morning, which we're expanding to students, so students have started to put a better information in as well. We really had an opportunity, I mean, you know, staff, there were some non-instructs were invited as well, which was great, and we had an opportunity to really, like I said, show of hands, hey, responsive classroom, one, two, three, four, that kind of thing. And it really gave some wonderful information. So like I mentioned, we've got about halfway down that list, and they let me steal that poster. We're going to really tackle that in about two weeks, like I mentioned. And start to really look at, in auditing some of these initiatives, look at things that maybe we could do better, or perhaps start to kind of, you know, sunset to take on other initiatives. So we have to give you an update when we come next time. I wanted to just mention our annual ENL parent meeting in Title I AIS Open House on 10/24 went very well. I always want to thank the BMS staff for taking the time to join us. It's always well-attended. I know our ENL parent meeting, we started a few years ago, and that seems to be gaining traction as well, so we're going to continue that each year. I wanted to mention, as we are many times a year, CLS was yet again School of the Week in Northern Duchess News. We also shared the other side of the page with Bubba, as I mentioned. And basically, for us, it was for our special's K2 Super Friends Character Ed Unit, which just wrapped up. And they really kind of took on that HEDRO concept that we utilize with our brag tags with students. So, which is something that really, I think, you guys have seen over the couple of years, and you certainly approve it every year, some of that work that that special's teams does around. Character Ed is huge. So they're really, you know, keeping on, the superheroes unit, certainly the Harry Potter unit last year aligned with the Olympics. So just finding those opportunities. So we just wrapped that up. Also, wanted to let you know that the 2018 CLS PE Turkey Truck Food Drive was very successful this year, collected 476 food donations for local Rhinebeck community, and that will help feed around 40 families in our immediate Rhinebeck community, which is one of the great things we love about that drive. It's very local. Another local initiative. In our 22nd year, the CLS making sure he is back and taking donations of new mittens, gloves, and hats to help little hands and heads stay warm this winter. And the items will be donated, as always, to Ask for Home for Children, ages five to teen. And last year, we delivered over 1,000 items. It was 1,013, which was a 21-year record. So we're going to meet that this year. Also, some good news. I've been working, I didn't, I don't think I teased you last time, but I've been working with five students who are interested in being our CLS press staff again. So I was able to meet with them. They're quite an exciting bunch. So I've met with them almost every other day since we came up with the, you know, with the possibility of doing this. We had a lot of people, students involved and interested, wanting to do it, that we had to actually keep it fair and pick names out of a hat, kept it to five students. But I wanted to just give a little shout-out to our very own Alex Airstock, who took it upon himself this year to try to carry that torch. He organized a lot of things into the fifth-grade classes. And as you know, one of the, you know, any of you that were on the board two years ago, when it really came to fruition, and it was wonderfully successful, we couldn't really get it off the ground last year. It's, one of the things I love about it is the fact that this is something that students really take an absorbed amount of responsibility. We work through Google Box, we kind of share information. My secretary, Rachel, gets involved, and she kind of puts it all together in format. So they got a lot of new ideas. Hopefully, next time I see you, we'll have a hard copy. We do expect to have it December issue out later in the month before we go on break. So stay tuned for that. I also wanted to give you an update, the Great Body Shop and our second step programs, our pilots this year are up and running. Took a little longer to get the second step information, materials than expected, but we are doing it. So we started with three through five, the Great Body Shop, which, if you remember, is a program around nutrition, community safety, central nervous system cells, germs, that type of thing. And then we're working second step K2, which is more of a social-emotional program, that we'll see how it goes. That focuses on mental health, conflict resolution, teaching empathy, et cetera, a lot of the things that we've actually spent some of our superintendence conference days, issue, working on with staff. And, you know, as always, our grade five worked with our PE department and partnered with the Northern Duchess paramedics to do our annual AEDC PR training with our fifth-grade students. So we did that about two weeks ago. Around the same time, we also had our annual safety day for grade three, which is something we look forward to. We spend a lot of time on fire safety, and we, years ago, we successfully incorporated our SROs who have conversations about strangers and that type of thing. So that used to be something we did with the state troopers, and really our SROs stepped in and decided that it would be a great idea, and that's been very successful. Upcoming, our first beer day rescheduled as a result of our Friday Snow Day, so it'll be this Friday, 11:30. And students are asked to wear a shirt that people can read, and, you know, let us know about your favorite team, things like that. But one of the things we actually incorporate into the message to students is that, you know, for them to be very aware that whatever message they have on their shirt should reflect, you know, the values and the norms of chancellor and Rhinebeck in general. So I'm just kind of reminding them to. And then our grade four winter concert is on Tuesday, December 11th, at 6:30, a chancellor, and then also a chancellor the same night. About an hour later, we'll have our grade five's winter concert. If you remember, we, grade five does the auditorium back in the spring. But in the winter, we can do that chancellor. So looking forward to that.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? How frequently is CLS Press hoping to come out?
Oh, hopefully once a month.
Yeah?
Yeah, we're going to try to do a monthly. This time, it was a slow start. We kind of came up with a date. I think they have to get me their articles by the 14th of this month. And the ideas, we'll hopefully get them at the end of each month if we can.
Great.
I think I've got some great ideas for new additions.
I just wanted to ask you, and if you already addressed it while I was seeing you manned out, how are things going with the big ideas math implementation?
Oh, good. We actually have been in contact with me checking in quite a bit, which I was very surprised. You know, there's still some questions, you know, one of the things is adding new staff. So we had Jennifer Mohammed just begin her ASO, we're working to get her in, which, for some reason, we're having a little bit of trouble doing. But other than that, they were trained on a lot of, if you remember back in October 1st, on a lot of the digital platforms. I even have some staff that, you know, just really have a good mind for math, that have started supplementing, you know, some of the things that we're working on. You know, it's also causing a lot of the grades, you know, in general, and grade-specific, to kind of really talk a lot more about math, since it's a new programming thing. But it seems to be up and running. I haven't heard much feedback from parents yet, but certainly staff. And I figured, give it a month or two for us to get kind of some of those tech offerings, you know, out to parents, get people comfortable with it. But one of the things I keep hearing about is, which was actually a big portion, one of the reasons, or one of the things we were looking for in a new program, and this certainly meant that need among others, was addressing ENL students and differentiating every single lesson. So I think that's something that's actually really getting good feedback, especially to those staff members, even though they have Ms. Berger in the building who helped, you know, work with those students, the teachers that have those students in their class. It just gives them a lot of information that maybe, you know, that seems to be something we have the least amount of experience in, or are getting better at. So the program's really helped in that way.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start this evening by updating something that I spoke of, I think, in my first quarter report on, in September. And we talked, I talked a little bit about technology integration. I think at that time, it was Steve that posed the question to me regarding students' internet and computer access at home, given the number of, increased number of teachers at the middle school, they're using web-based platforms like Canvas. So, beginning this evening, I was, I'm pleased to report that with the distribution of a number of refurbished computers just prior to the Thanksgiving break, based on the survey results that we have from the beginning of the school year, and again, we know that this is kind of an always-changing target. But every middle school student has computer access or access to a, to a device and internet access at home as of right now. And we're going to continue to work with our technology department and continue to work with Ms. Lox, who is kind of the gatekeeper of the Thompson Trust Rhinebeck Family Contingency Fund. And we found that that's, that's been very helpful, too. So I'm very pleased to share that news with you. Earlier this month, BMS held its annual Veterans Day Assembly. I realize this year that this has now been going on for 30 years. So like the circus, who is in its, which is in its 26th year, this is a longstanding tradition at Oakley Middle School. We have more than 125 students that participated in this year's ceremony. We honored nearly 200 veterans in that hour and a half, and we had approximately 60 guests in the audience. This year's speaker was Major Warren Chepro, who served in the US Marines from 1987 to 1995, went back, got an education, got his PA's license, PA license, and then has served in the US Army as a medic from the year 2000 to present. And that includes two combat tours during Operations Iraqi and Endurance Freedom. He shared a lot of history of Veterans Day with our students, as well as quite a, quite a number of very interesting pictures and insights to, to his, you know, his experience in the military overseas. Also, earlier this month, our eighth-grade students visited Alphaville in the FDR Library and Museum, where they viewed a limited-time exhibition titled "The Art of War," American poster art from 1941 to 1945, focusing on World War II. This opportunity will provide them with the foundation for a similar project that they'll undertake later on in the winter. We would have liked to have timed it a little bit closer to the project, but this exhibition closes out as of December 31st. In the area of mental health and wellness, this goes back to what we talked about earlier. Staff had the opportunity, in addition to working with individuals from the National School Climate Center, staff have had the opportunity to work with David Levine, who is the founder of the Teaching Empathy Institute and an expert in the field of social-emotional learning, over the course of our last two superintendence conference days. What this has meant in the middle school, as I said before, is we've taken some time to audit what we're doing now. And I'm pleased to report that we have several teachers that are already piloting some of his work and some of the work that came out of those superintendence conference day PD opportunities with, with plans to implement several more at all three grade levels. So we're real pleased about that. In addition, following a successful first quarter, and I know I've mentioned her work to you before, her work with Alice Coleman, Certified Fearless Living Coach, has been working with our sixth-grade students in Home and Careers classes, was successful this first quarter. And while we got started a little bit later, and did a truncated version with our students during the first quarter, we continue, plan to continue to expand that work out with our sixth-grade students going into quarter two. And lastly, in the area of mental health and wellness, we're fortunate to be able to welcome back Phoenix Kawamoto into our health classes this year. And we did this And we did this a little bit later in the spring last year with our seventh grade students. She's going to be sharing her diversity education and sensitivity training program titled Cultivating Compassion. She begins with a full grade level assembly, which she conducted last Wednesday. She worked in small groups in health classes yesterday, and she is coming back to work in small groups in health classes next Monday as well. And her discussions focus on issues pertaining to diversity and prejudice and bullying. In extracurricular club news, the BMS STEM Club welcomed Duchess Community College Professor Mark Condon. He came in, they've done all sorts of great projects this fall with the STEM Club, exploding bunkings and unpopable levels, and they were able to welcome in Mark Condon, who conducted a sharp section for, and with the assistance of 20 club members. So that was very exciting. The BMS Art Club has begun its ninth annual Knit for the Navy campaign. More than 50 people participated in the kickoff party. I know I've spoken about this project before. It's a great service learning project for our students. It spans, it's multi-generational. We have grandparents that come in with their, with their, their children in the middle school. We have high school students that come back and do this every year. And it was, it was wonderful to see that it was standing room only and kids were sitting on the, on the shelves and benches and all over the place. Last year, you recall that we doubled our previous record. I think our previous record prior to last year was 60 items that were donated to the Vassar NICU. And I think last year we donated 103rd. So we've got quite a mark to strive for this year. And finally, in service learning, the BMS Student Council is gearing up for its annual holiday food drive. That's going to be conducted between December 12th and 19th. And this year, because we always, we always have a goal in mind, we're looking for more than 1,000 items that we can donate to our local food pantry. Upcoming events, we have parent teacher conferences scheduled for this Thursday evening and Friday afternoon. The BMS Band and Chorus Concert will be held next Thursday, December 6th at 7 o'clock. You'll recall that this is the first time, this is the first time in my time in the district that we have had a combined band and chorus concert in the middle school. So I'm excited about that and anxious to get to next Thursday. Between December 13th and 21st, thanks to the organization of Mark Berg and Megan Robier, five to six high school peer mentors will assist Mr. Friskinett in each and every one of his social studies classes during that week, running stations and facilitating discussion to seventh grade students learn about the revolution and war. This is something that we've done for the last couple of years, certainly a big undertaking and a big commitment for the students that are able to, and offer to help us out. We weren't sure whether or not we were going to attempt to put that many students together to do this project. And Mr. Friskinett has had a number of high school students that have come to him this fall anxious to participate. So, so we're looking to do that, we're in the process of procuring peer mentors now. On December 14th, members of the Peer Leadership Club will participate in the first of several collaborative events with CLS students. This first one is, is our peer mentors going over and reading to the kindergarten students. That evening, we will hold our first dance of the year. Once again, thanks to the support of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, eighth grade students will be participating this January in a day of science. As you know, they'll partner with the professors of Bard College and the Bard students, do a number of hands-on experiments and activities in math, physics, biology, chemistry, and computer science. And finally, you'll recall that I wasn't here to deliver my last board presentation. As I think Ed shared with you, I went and viewed an assembly presentation for parents on internet safety that was given in a neighboring district, extremely well received by the parents that were there that evening. Though I wasn't able to go over and view one of the student presentations during the day, I got very positive feedback. And I'm pleased to report that we will welcome Thomas Grimes to the district on January 10th. Mr. Grimes is a retired New York City Police Detective. In 2007, he founded a group called New York Finest Speakers. He's been presenting to students' parents on internet safety and cyberbullying ever since. He's been on the Today Show a number of times. He's considered an expert in the field. And on that date, he'll, he'll do a presentation for middle school students, he'll do a presentation for high school students, as well as a parent presentation. So we'll get that word out as soon as we can. That's it for middle school.
Questions, anyone? Will that parent presentation be broadcast across the district?
It will be broadcast to as many people as I can, I can get it out to. So 6:30 to 8:30 that evening, January 10th. You heard it here first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As usual, I wanted to update you on the building level, the planning team news. Our most recent day of service took place on November 3rd, and I'm happy to report that the participation slowly but steadily is increasing over the past three years. We had 12 students working here on the memory garden. We had 10 students work in the village with tree planting. And by happenstance, became aware of a benefit dinner the evening of the 3rd, we had 10 students participate there as well. So over time, we're getting more and more students involved in our days of service, and the BLPT is looking forward to planning our spring day of service. In addition, the BLPT is continuing to plan and discuss community read. We're getting down to the nitty-gritty and talking about when, what will be read, what grade level, all grade level. So there's a lot of questions to be answered. We're looking forward to being able to make a specific announcement in the near future. In departmental news, I wanted to recognize the English Department, who with the support from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation and a number of community volunteers hosted a networking opportunity called Info Chat on November 2nd. We had 42 local professionals and business people meet with 77 of our seniors to talk about their careers, their educations, and just from my observations and then deep breathing with some of our students afterwards, our students were absolutely inspired by what they heard and were excited and interested about the possibilities and opportunities that await them after high school. The English Department, members of RSF and I, deep griefed the following week about the Info Chat, talked about ways we can refine it for future years. But again, it was a first opportunity for our students to participate in something to think about their post-high school careers, which is very, very powerful, and we look forward to continuing that, that partnership. In some of our academic areas, in our art department, design and drawing for production, our students use computer-assisted design programs to design three-dimensional puzzles, and then they fabricate those puzzles. They're sort, they look like Rubik's Cube on the outside, but they fit together in a certain way, but it's hard to discover how they fit together. So they, they create those puzzles and then they challenge one another in terms of, so very engaging learning activity. Our ceramics classes teamed up with Millbrook and Reithook Ceramic Students to help raise money for the Duchess County SPCA by donating a piece of pottery. All proceeds go to the shelter. I'm happy to report that one of our juniors in our drawing class won Art Student of the Week to grades 10 through 12. And this is a national online portfolio program our art students participate in, it's called Artsonia. So one of our students was recognized for excellence in her work. In our music department, this opportunity came up relatively recently. The high school band will have an opportunity to work with a famous composer, conductor in dance literature named Robert Smith. He's going to be guest conducting at Maris College this weekend. Maris invited our band to come in on Friday in rehearsal to play with Mr. Smith, sitting side by side with Maris students issues. This is a really incredible opportunity for students to work with a very well-known practicing composer. In addition, in our music department, we have five students who are accepted to participate in the Missy Mairdall All-Stay Ensemble. Moving to guidance, our councils report that almost half of our, our seniors have applied either early action or early decisions here, which is an increase over previous years. And we're getting initial responses that almost all the students who responded to us so far have been accepted into their primary choice for college. So that reflects obviously a lot of work on part of the students to either apply early action or early decision, a lot of support from parents, and work from our counselors and our academic departments. In the co-curricular realm, I'd like to, to share with you that the athletic director and I are auditing some programs that can be used for athletes to give them information about healthy relationships. We're looking in particular at a program called The Athletes as Leaders. It's been vetted to a number of national organizations. And the function in having coaches have weekly conversations with athletes about important topics in reference to healthy relationships. You may have noticed when you came into the meeting this evening, in the right of the lobby, a giving rack sponsored by the National Honor Society. The National Society has decided to sponsor several families from Astor Services, and they've made this, this giving rack in order to share with our community the needs of some of our younger students in the Astor program. So we'll have information about how to donate, both in our newsletter and I think government has also sent us a messenger device, but the very impressive, in my view, work from our NHS. In other NHS news, our induction has been postponed for some administrative responsibilities that have to take place. My responsibility is responsible, so we'll have to push the induction a little bit. On the 17th, our Fall Drama Club held, to my knowledge, the first, at least in my time here, I know the first non-musical dramatic performance at Rhinebeck High School. And they performed a comedy. And in my view, there's nothing more difficult than performing a comedy. Tragedy is easy, but comedy is tough. We have very, very talented comic actors in our, in our school. In addition, I want to share with you that this is the first time that both the sets and the costumes were all created by our students. So we, it was a wonderful performance, and we're looking forward to next year's non-musical dramatic performance. I know I've mentioned this in my last report, but I'll give this another plug. If you haven't had a chance to, check out rhinebeckreality.org. I encourage you to do so. That's the digital version of our school newspaper. Articles are both uploaded continually as they're, as they're written and approved, and also full editions of the paper are uploaded. Our Model UN Club will be traveling to the Bronx Science High School for a Model UN Conference on December 8th. And looking ahead, as Mr. Kembleton mentioned, we'll have parent teacher conferences at the end of this week. We're going to continue in the high school, our pilot of Office Hour drop-in parent teacher conferences on Friday. Tomorrow night, in conjunction with BMS, the Drama Club is sponsoring the Rhinebeck Scott Talent, Talent Show. If you're, if you're free, I encourage you to attend. It's always a lot of fun. On December 13th, similar to the BMS Band and Chorus Concert, the high school will have a combined band and chorus concert. And on December 18th, our Men's Blues Choir will be performing for the Chamber of Commerce at their December breakfast. So updates from that school.
Any questions? The Rhinebeck Reality is fantastic. It's really so amazing. And the website's really beautiful, and is that all done by the journalism class as well, the design and layout?
Well, the framework and design is, is part of, it's called the snow site, so that is, that's a template of, most of which has been provided to us, but the photography, of course, is the students writing the courses and students. I'm not familiar enough with the website to know what, at this point, we're able to alter or customize or personalize, but that initially was part of the appeal, is that it's very, it's very grabby.
Yeah.
It's very, very pleasing.
It's really, really great. They're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board of Education obligations under New York law, section 1125.
Yes, so the good news is that everybody sitting at this table has already been exposed to this, so nobody's hearing it for the first time. So this is just a reminder that according to Ed Law, section 1125, Board of Education members are mandated reporters for allegations of abuse by an employee or a volunteer in an educational setting, specific to an educational setting. Other employees have mandated reporter responsibilities for hearing about, say, abuse outside in the community or in the home. Board members are not, but board members are mandated reporters regarding sexual abuse that take place, that may take place in the school setting by either employees or, or volunteers. So again, I just mention this every year, just to make sure that as board members, you understand if you hear something regarding alleged abuse in the school setting.
Right. It's not limited to sexual abuse, right? It's...
No, it's not limited to sexual abuse.
Right. Because you said sexual abuse.
I'm sorry. Then I, I misspoke.
Okay.
Any kind of abuse in the school setting. And there's on page two of the item in your packets, there, there is a four-step process for bringing those, those allegations forward in order to do your duty as mandated reporters. So just like to go over that every year and make sure everybody's aware of that responsibility.
Anyone have any questions? I would like to thank Whitney for the very first clean copy of this that I have ever seen. Thanks for taking out the original.
It got to the point where it was nigh illegible.
Yeah.
Yeah, she had, she had to dig through the catacombs down in the basement of the park for the first version of this.
I appreciate you going to play with the mice.
All right. And we will move on to Board Committee Report. Long-range planning is mine. We talked a little bit about class size and generally the idea that is that smaller class sizes are more beneficial for kids in the younger grades, but as they age up, it seems to be less important in terms of achievement. We looked at Haldane, where we went to visit about a month or so ago, and as well as Scarsdale and Chapewa, some of the top performing school districts in Westchester. Interestingly, the Westchester district seem to have larger class sizes in the middle of high school than Rhinebeck in general. And we're going to continue to sort of talk about class sizes in general and what our comfortable tolerances would be. We also talked about out-of-district tuition. One of our community advisory folks had brought forth some research she had done on her own about out-of-district tuition, and we've asked Tom to reach out and have a conversation with her about sort of the practical reality of tuition in school districts around our area. Some may say that they accept out-of-district kids, but in actuality, don't. Some report that they have different fee structures for different kids, but that's not really best practice because all kids deserve a fair and appropriate public education. Preliminary budgeting has begun. The initial budget binders have been given to the principals, and because we've extended our timeframe, they will have much more time to go through these budget binders with department heads and grade level chairs, back and forth a number of times where that's not been the case in the last few years at least. So that by the time we get the first draft budget, I think it's the hope that all district personnel will know what's being put in that first draft that's presented to us in February. Next year, we're going to have the new accounting. Next year, we're going to have the new accounting software in place, and we're hoping to refine the budgeting process further once that is up. Our next meeting is December 1st. Move on, personnel.
That's me. Very short. Joe just updated us on a search for a new play director, which has been a little bit difficult to play school. And in the rest of the meeting, we discussed negotiations.
And audit.
Those are mine. These are old. These are from when the company came in to give us the external audit, so a lot of these are outdated, or at least old news anyway. But we were able to increase the general fund balance by $411,000. A lot of that was due to the tax cap piercing that we did. Some concerns that they have is educational costs and, you know, things like that continuing to increase, be straight on the district's finances. Unfunded mandates and technology upgrades can also cause a financial concern. And from revenue perspective, New York State aid has been very flat for us, so-called high-wealth districts, for the last several years, which is also requiring the district to increasingly make deeper cuts to the budget.
Any questions for audit? Okay. We move on to the BOCs capital exclusion from New York State property tax.
Yes, just to provide some context on that topic, you're all aware that Dutchess BOCs is bringing a capital project to public vote on December 11th. Voting will be in all 13 districts in the county. Rhinebeck's will be here, middle school, high school, right of the front foyer area. The reason that that's relevant to this information that you probably will receive directly from NISBA, but I wanted to bring it up here, is that I believe last year, if I'm not mistaken, although passed by both houses of the legislature, our governor sought to veto legislation which would have removed capital project costs for BOCs from the tax levy cap. So NISBA has been putting a press on, trying to convince the governor to rethink his veto position on that legislation. And of course, this is directly related to our BOCs and their capital project vote on December 11th. Whether it has a direct influence or not remains to be seen, but it would certainly be a positive, particularly for our district, if this were removed from the cap, as is capital project expenditures that individual districts generate. And since BOCs serves our students, as well as students from the other 12 component districts, it seems like a fair, reasonable thing. Our legislators seem to think it's a fair, reasonable thing, and our governor doesn't think it's fair and reasonable, at least from his perspective. So really, a question that I'm raising here by bringing this to your attention, and NISBA has provided us with some information, would be whether this board would support my using this letter and maybe tweaking it a little bit here and there to reach out to our governor and say, hey, do what's right, and I don't want to advocate on the part of this board unless this board feels that way. I can do it from my own personal perspective, and I will if I need to. But I'd like, you know, I'd like to get some sense from our board as to whether you would support my sending a letter or something very similar to the governor with copies to our legislators, so they know that we support what they had done, and the governor has not seen fit to support. So I'm just throwing it out there as a kind of a straw, you don't need a vote here, but if you say, yeah, go for it, then tomorrow morning, go for it. If you'd rather I not, then speak up, and I can just do it for myself.
Please.
I very much support your sending the letter on behalf of the board. I would, I mean, I think this draft is a good framework, but I would like to see something that was more specific to our particular situation. And in particular, I was thinking that because, and I believe that NISBA addressed this as well, because this project is going, it was the BOCs people who addressed it when they came, that this project is going to be voted on, which was one of the governor's objections the last time this came up, that these BOCs capital projects were not all subject to votes. I'd like that to be reflected in the letter that ultimately goes out, that we've made efforts to address this concern, and so to the extent that that's something that held him back before, it shouldn't hold him back now. But yes, I'm very much in favor of it.
Anyone else?
I also support. I would appreciate your sending the letter on behalf of the board. I'm wondering, procedurally, does it have to go through the legislature again, or can he just withdraw his veto?
I'm not sure about that. That's a good question.
I think that the bill's been amended and resubmitted. I think both houses voted it, so it's with Cuomo now. Yes. So he hasn't acted on the current version yet.
That happened before the 11th? Does it feel like once that happens?
Yeah, I don't know. That I don't know. But really, the key question is, will, if he approves it, will that action apply to this project? That's something that I don't know that we can know the answer to beforehand.
Yeah, and NISBA doesn't address that because not every BOCs in the state is having a capital project. We happen to be in the unenviable position that this is happening.
Right in front.
Maybe they should make it December or January, just.
Whether it helps us directly or not, if it seems to be to do the right thing to do, and even if it doesn't help us, it will likely help other schools and other BOCs. And if it does help us retroactively, then that's all better, yeah.
Well, I also am in favor of a letter going to the governor.
Do I hear any objections around the table?
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be done.
Excellent. Great. You're prosperous.
All right. So we get to move on to good news. Anybody have good news they'd like to share, other than all the great stuff we heard from one building? I started down the group today. Excellent. Really nice. Any old business? And we have our second opportunity for public comment. Would anyone like to come?
She's got a paper that has to do with it.
We're wrapping it up. Just come on, yeah, just any of us can sign it for you, yeah. All right. Other? No other. Okay, then let's sign those sheets, and we'll move on to action items.
Give it to Ms. Flacher. Hi, anyone wants to sign?
Thank you.
Are you telling us something?
What?
Are you telling us something?
Oh, I'm going to Ohio State.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We hope they have a better football team by the time you get there.
I was just going to say, I bet they're going to have a better soccer team.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
All right. Move on to action items. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Then may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to thank the Calaband Music Company for the donation of ukuleles at Chancery. That's really fantastic. Here are children who are making all kinds of interesting music there. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised appointment of Terry Secula and Chris Martin to provide aid services for after-school activities as necessary and appropriate on November 13th, December 3rd, and December 13th, 2018, in accordance with the 2017-18 anti-salary schedule be attached?
Second.
I just want to be clear that the change is based on the dates. I had an incorrect date when this came to the board at the last meeting, and we have the county's payable clerk who is not going to pay unless the board approved the right dates, which I totally support. So that's why it's coming back to you for revision on the dates only.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Lucy Munger to provide teacher aid services for one to two hours per day for each day of girls' modified basketball practices and/or home contests as necessary and appropriate for the winter 2018 interscholastic athletic season effective November 13th, 2018, in accordance with the 2017-18 anti-salary schedule. Mary Lehan will provide substitute coverage as needed.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Nicole Maraglio as a part-time special education teacher, assigned to provide special education homebound instruction on an hourly per diem basis at the pleasure of the Board of Education with an effective date of November 28th, 2018, at the rate of $54.28 per hour, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2018-19?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to point out that currently, the child's IEP to which this applies is scheduled to receive one hour of instruction per diem. So that's five hours a week. You know, Tom figured out the annualized salary, and then we brought it down to an hourly rate, so.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of talking about negotiations?
Got it.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes, and moving into executive session.